And we'll go ahead and start with the speakers now just to make a couple of quick remarks. We've been getting engaged with a number of you about laterals and the purpose tonight is, I don't think they're going to make any hard decisions, they really want to hear from the public. And it's such a diverse issue because we have some subdivisions where people don't want laterals and they've sprayed them out, but the people in the neighborhoods that do like them, they let them have them. In other neighborhoods, they're completely gone. In other neighborhoods where the development orders from the old days say, "We don't need any laterals or none of them are required," there's 20 or 30 ponds that have laterals naturally out there. So there's a lot of different issues and some people say, "Well, look at the development order and go by the development order." Well, it sounds good in concrete. Hampton Park, for example, your first 10 ponds were created under one development order and one ordinance. The remaining ponds were done under a completely other ordinance. So if you want to go by development orders, even within that community, it's going to be split. And I have a whole book out there and put a list of all the different development orders related to the different ponds. And if you go back and look at some of these documents, they might say something like, "Litoral plants scattered around the pond." What does around mean? What does scattered mean? It may not give any numbers, it may not give the types of plants, it may not give the location to the plants. So basically what we're trying to do is get input from the residents and try to make something work. And to me, it's our budget and the level of service, what the staff needs to do. And we can do whatever the board decides and sets the policy for. But I hope everyone's just congenial and makes their comments and believing. We're not trying to run anything down anyone's throat and a one-size-fits-all and tell people what to do. And we're going to do our best to work with you and get something that works for everybody. So, and looking forward to the comments. So, I'd go, in order to have these, I guess first, Mr. Senior. Rod Senior, Benning Drive.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, could I ask you to pop that in for benefit and the supervisor and pictures to show? Good afternoon, everyone on the board. It's three and a half years since I was on this board, working hard with you guys to set some pond standards for the first time for this district. This, I blew the dust off it and read through them this week to remind myself what we did. It was a lot of work done by a lot of people, Seven Trent, Lee County were involved, South Florida Water Management Service District, Tetra Tech, Pelican Preserve's Ponds Group, and the Gateway Ponds Group. It was ratified by this board on December the 17th, 2015. I am showing some slides to the board, unfortunately, the big screen's not working, so you won't be able to see. So, if you could just...
It was fine.
If GSCVD is not there, right?
And I'm sorry that it's not up on the screen, we had some computer difficulties. But if anyone's interested, if they want to ask, I'd be glad to supply them.
So the second slide, please, Chris. Thank you, guys. Second slide here. Baseline standards that we set at the time was Lee County's 10-418 section of the development code. Planted laterals must be 25 feet, 25% of the total linear foot at controlled elevation. And wherever possible, the laterals must be located away from residential lots to avoid maintenance and aesthetic conflicts with homeowners. Next slide, please, Chris. For avoidance of any doubt, we put into these standards that the DO, where the DO or the permit prevail, it prevails over section 10-418. That's the DO prevails over Lee County's section 10-418 unless major changes are made to the water body. Where the DO is silent on laterals, which is 34 out of our 76 ponds in Gateway, then the district shall maintain the laterals according to the DO requirements. The district has got the discretion to remove laterals where it causes aesthetic conflict with the residents. Margaret, you and I chatted at the time we ratified this and you asked for some more language to be put in and we all agreed on it. And it says that, "It has the discretion to remove laterals after evaluating and documenting current and consequential erosion and water quality issues." And we put that in at the time. As far as maintenance is concerned, then maintenance, it should be, sorry, the laterals should be maintained and reduced to 25% of the total linear footage of the pond. Three plants per linear foot, wherever possible, locate the laterals away from residential and commercial lots using wetland golf course and non-developed shoreline to meet 25% requirements. Eight-foot maintenance stakes, it was exactly how Pelican Reserve used, maintained their ponds and they do a great job. We do not do that. And in fact, I noticed on page five, one of the red lines is that you've removed the eight-foot maintenance stakes and I have no idea why that would be removed. To me, that's important because otherwise these laterals are going to grow into the lakes and there'll be no guidelines given to the maintenance contractor. Fish barriers, fences should be put in, they have them at Pelican. I'm not sure we have them here at Gateway. Otherwise, grass, carp, and whatever is going to eat these things after you've planted them. And as far as I know, there's no lateral maintenance standards specified in our aquagenics contract. Costs, if you can go onto the cost slide, please, Chris. Yeah, costs. Really simple. Forty-two ponds have got lateral requirements, that's 150,000 linear feet. Thirty-four have gotten silent on laterals, that's 120,000 linear feet, making a total of just over quarter million linear feet in Gateway. If we plant laterals according to the 25% policy set by Lee County, it's going to cost us $100,000 for those 76 ponds. We're going to maintain them according to aquagenics, it's a dollar a linear foot per annum to maintain them. That's a total per annum of $67,000. That's for a 25% policy. If we go to 100%, then planting is going to cost $400,000. An annual maintenance is $270,000. The next slide, please, Chris, next, the last one. This is a picture of, on the left is a typical Gateway pond, pond number 111, which is not maintained. And on the right-hand side is a Pelican pond, which is extremely well-maintained to an eight-foot stake. And I'm making a point that maintenance is something that we haven't been very good at. So, conclusion, the concluding slide. Our maintenance record is poor. I think that we have to demonstrate that the district can maintain the litoral shelf to our current pond standards that we set three years ago before going ahead and trying to make any substantial amendments to them. In other words, walk before we can run. 25% policy is expensive, $100,000 to plant, $67,000 a year to maintain. 100% policy is totally unacceptable, $405,000 to plant, $270,000 a year to maintain. I think we need to specify maintenance standards in the aquagenics contract and budget accordingly. Last point, on those red lines, my key observation, having looked at them, is that on page four, there are five bullet points which are in fact Lee County's 10-418 standards. I don't think we should be redlining those at all, that's not for us to redline. Those are standards that are in 10-418, they don't talk about minimums. I don't think there should be any red lines in those five bullet points. Other than that, I would look at page five and I would say that I don't like the idea of thinning when we agreed to remove them where there's no DO requirement. And I don't think we should...
Rod, can you say that again?
There's a mention of thinning in place of removing on page five. I think we agreed to remove where there is aesthetic conflicts and where it's not going to cause consequential water quality problems, then we agreed to remove if there is requirement by the residents or HOAs or POAs. Now we're changing it to thinning, which is a totally different concept. Eight-foot stake has totally been removed from number two on page five and I really think that's wrong. If we're going to start getting more abundant with our litoral policy, we have to stake it, we have to give the maintenance guys some guideline, otherwise these things are just going to grow rampant.
Well, that got changed, I'll do some that one clarification, that got changed from eight to 10 because some ponds have, there are so many different requirements, like you come to a happy meeting. They didn't remove it. It's just hard to read.
The problem on this is that if we have different ponds with different slopes, if you're at a 4-1 slope and you go to the two-foot depth, which is where the laterals are to terminate, then it's eight feet. If you're on a pond that's got a six-foot slope, then it's to 12 feet. So, the key number is the two-foot depth. That's where the laterals are supposed to stop.
At the end, last point, Margaret, at the end of number two on page five, you struck out, "The PLS shall be state to serve as a marker, the PLS shall not extend beyond." I don't agree, I think there should be a marker, that's what we originally agreed. And Pelican use eight foot. Frankly, I would rather see money spent on aeration than laterals to improve our water quality. I think our fixed asset reserve would be better spent. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sally Black Baron. We do have a five-minute time limit, if it goes past that, you could ask the chair, but we're trying to stick to five minutes personally.
First, I'd like to thank you, Madam President, and supervisors and staff, for listening to the community's concerns about draft policy for litoral removal, the many hours that you have invested at your litoral policy workshop to update the policy for litoral removal. In this regard, I request, one, for the board supervisors to approve the final draft of the policy for litoral removal. I thought the vote was going to come today, so... Two, for the board to allocate and approve funds in the upcoming budget and aquagenics contract for the thinning back and the other care of the laterals for the Hampton Park lakes. We sincerely thank you for the recent spraying of the three feet of spikewash grass around all of our lakes in response to our concerns. And three, to also appropriate funds to replant the laterals that were stripped out behind five homes on Lake Three. Since the rains have started, the bank behind one of the five houses located at the end of Lake Three, which is closest to Kentwood Avenue, is already showing erosion. It has mud and silt to flow into the lake after each rain. Because the CBD is responsible for taking care of algae and erosion, I hope your immediate action to go out and check it out and replant may save the rest of the 300 linear foot strip on the bank from eroding. And four, to approve the issuance of the limited development order for Hampton Park, which was submitted by Jim Braun at your May 16th workshop meeting, I believe the limited DO would end the confusion with all the various ordinances which have since superseded ordinance 9828. And the ordinance 9828 was the code at the time that the 10 lakes in Hampton Park were built and then superseded by ordinance 9823 for the changes done in 2009 and then on and on and on. So, I think that that would just simplify it in regard to everything that keeps going back and forth about. You know, you have them there, they're there, you took them over. I think in regard to this gentleman's comments, I would only say that there were communities where, that are older and established and were planned, where there was no commercial centers and WCI did build them behind the banks, behind homes. And that was the plan, so how do you go back on that? WCI, you know, formed the master plan for Gateway, they formed this board. So I'm sure that they had county approval to do that. But things like that that come up later, like in 10-418, is just kind of like when you revert back to that, it's how do you make that correct? And taking the laterals out versus thinning them, I think, I can't imagine anybody taking laterals out of the lake in the first place. And, but the overgrowth, I think if there is a minimum, and it had been, we have not had them maintained until now, since you took over our lakes, I think that if they were maintained to eight, 10, whatever, you know, feet you decide, four, whatever it's going to take, and not let them get out of hand, it wouldn't be that cost-effective. I mean, that expensive to do that, excuse me. So, that's my feeling and thanks again, we really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And our third speaker, Jim Wisnewski, Late Times Drive, Silver Lakes.
I'm Jim Wisnewski, I'm on the Board of Directors of Silver Lakes. I was also on the ponds committee, that was headed by Ed, three, four years ago, that put the pond standards together. We had no idea this effort was going on. Had we known, you would have had a lot of people participate from Silver Lakes, just like they did in the original ponds committee. This proposed, I echo a lot of what Rod said just a minute ago. A lot of this changes are simply, you know, they're misguided, they're unworkable, some of it makes no sense at all. And we were very careful when we did the ponds work group to make sure we stayed in the four corners of the ordinances, the statutes, we didn't want to wander outside. I look at some of these changes in red lines and all I see is you're just ignoring things or whoever broke this is ignoring things. 10-418, as you probably know, doesn't apply to the vast majority, maybe all lakes in Gateway. 10-418 was put in place, the laterals part of it, on June 23rd, 2009. And it clearly states in the transition rules and the effective date rules that any DO issued before that date is not affected by 10-418, it's very clear. And it goes further to say those DOs still are effective with their own terms based on the ordinance in effect at the time when they were issued. So it doesn't, it says 10-418 doesn't apply and the old rules do apply and the DO as it's stated is in force. So anyone trying to say 10-418 should be shoved down everyone's throat, just not right. And it's completely in violation of the ordinance. Some of the other language in there, and again, we were very careful to stay within the box. For instance, the PLS shoreline length must be calculated at 25% of the total linear feet. It doesn't say maybe, can be, kind of, sort of, should be. It absolutely doesn't say must be at a minimum 25%. That's not what it says, this is clear and unambiguous language. You can't just ignore that. And there's that, those kinds of examples of that throughout this. So, I just don't understand how that is, why does it being put forward? There hasn't been, to my knowledge, any kind of serious water quality problem in Gateway. I know when I was on the ponds committee, we tested the basins every month. There were no big problems. We ended up testing, a couple of years ago, every pond in Gateway. Just before the Hampton Park ponds were turned off, every single one of them. Not a single one of the 60 tested had a water quality problem based on the PSI. Nobody failed. The ponds in Silver Lakes, I know some people, especially at Severn Trent, were like, oh, you know, Silver Lakes people, we had all the laterals sprayed out a couple of years ago. Six months later, this was done. And the results, common, you know, common thought was, oh, is there a problem in Silver Lakes? Our north pond, Lake 85, has a PSI of 48, it's in the top 10% cleanest lakes in Gateway. Our central lake, 50, it's in the top 15%. Our south lake, it still has laterals left because they had turned into a marsh and aquagenics tried to get them all out and they couldn't. You would think that would be the cleanest one, no, middle of the pack. So, a lot of the stuff about laterals is urban legend, frankly, we lived it, we've seen it. So what needs to be done is the existing pond policy should just remain. There is no reason to change it, I agree with Rod, absolutely no reason to change it. What needs to be done is have a procedure put in place to allow homeowners, not HOAs, HOAs are not going to want to get in the middle of it. I'm a board member, HOAs aren't going to get in the middle of this. HOAs are not being harmed. The people being harmed are the homeowners. They've got unsafe conditions behind their house. I had an alligator living in there, behind my house. There's kids four and five years old running around there trying to fish. And that gator comes out and gets him, what are you going to do? Those laterals don't belong there under the development order and it's dangerous. And, you know, home prices, as much as some people say, you know, laterals are good for homes, Silver Lakes do not, I did a study on that. Time on market was longer if you had a lakefront home. Amount of price per square foot was lower. Even the houses on Griffith backing up to a busy street were selling for more. It was terrible, it still is. So, I proposed a procedure that could possibly be adopted. The one that's in this red line, it's unworkable. It's a neighborhood, how do you certify this? There's not going to be a vote of anybody, this would be a board of directors decision. You're not changing covenants, you're not changing bylaws, there wouldn't be votes of anybody other than a board, and a board's not going to want to deal with this. So I did a procedure, I sent it to Chris a couple of weeks ago and said, "Feel free to distribute it to the board and anybody else who's interested." I don't know if you did or didn't.
I have not, I'm going to wait till it...
Here's eight more. You can pass them around. And let me just kind of high, high level, I'll tell you what it says. It basically says, it basically formalizes what's going out, going on now informally, where our staff will get a request from a homeowner, they'll take a look at it, make sure it's not on a litoral shelf. I just had this done. And everything goes okay, they get a bid from aquagenics, you see what the bid is, and it gets sprayed out. And so I think that is where the focus needs to be, leave it to individual owners. Now, the one thing I've got in here to deal with the funding problem, which is unfortunate, you know, the funding right now, from my understanding, is $150 per ton per month. You can't do a whole lot with $150 per ton per month under the aquagenics contract. So, even though a lot of homeowners will scream about it, I think you just put it on the homeowners. Say, "Okay, you want to get rid of them, you come in, tell us the DO, show us there's no litoral planting shelf, tell us what contractor you're going to use, licensed contractor, how they intend to get rid of it, harvester, hand pulling, you know, spraying, and we'll evaluate it. And then everything's good, we'll let you go and do it." That way homeowners can take care of the thing themselves. And I've also got in there, you know, a discretionary item for Gateway services. If you want to have more control and you're worried about multiple contractors running around, I have aquagenics do it, I let aquagenics do the individuals. That takes care of the budget problem here, at least in the near term. When you finally get the budget to fix everything, it'll be less because homeowners will have paid for it and taken care of it themselves. And the dangerous situation behind a lot of these houses, especially in the winter and spring when the gators are floating around everywhere, will be gone. And I think that's the only logical thing to do. I just don't see, as Rod said, you know, the original policy hasn't even been implemented yet, truly. And until that's done, why, you know, why change anything? But I think, you know, the focus of some folks thinking to jam 10-418 down everyone's throat throughout Gateway is just completely misguided and that's just wrong. I don't think they would stand up if they had a challenge, I don't think they would stand up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim, your discussions, your points and your arguments aren't as compelling as they were four years ago.
Thank you, Joe.
We appreciate your help. Next, I have Flavia Walsh, Mangalaya Lakes.
All right.
Good job.
Let's start. Flavia Walsh, Mangalaya Lakes, and I was also part of the ponds committee group and also had a pleasure to working with Ed and everybody else. I feel like I'm in the midst, I'm not all pro and I'm not all against at the same time. I think we kind of have to go back to the beginning and find out what truly what stormwater treatment ponds are and go back to the basics. They were originally designed to stop flooding, that was the original, what they were made for. And eventually, when they became extremely polluted because of the runoff they were going to them, the secondary part of it was to make sure that water that was in there was treated and good enough to be dispersed to a different type of body of water and so forth, so forth. They end up in the Gulf of Mexico or wherever we, the water we go. The only two things that can treat the water quality are laterals when needed or biological treatments and all that and going on and all about it from Lake 83. I do think that some of the ponds, either they're silent or not, and if the water quality is something that is below what the normal standards are, the laterals should be, should stay. And I think that's what we should be looking at because if the ponds were designed for the two main uses, which is to collect and hold the water so we don't flood and to have that water treated that is good enough to be sending down the stream and we're removing all those laterals, which is doing the job of cleaning up that water, what's going to happen long-term? All that bad water is going to go down the stream. And as a, the Gateway is the operating entity and it is their job to make sure that the water that's going out is clean. It's not just their job to make sure that it doesn't flood or that the lakes look like pristine pools. Their main job is to make sure that that water is good enough to go, keep going down the road. I think the document needs a lot of revisions. I don't think it's a bad idea to maybe get a committee back together and get fresh minds and fresh eyes and look at this. I don't think the board should be making any decision anytime soon. There are contradictions in here, there are contradictions with different ornaments. And I think, you know, we need time, I don't think this is time to press and go on with this document. So I would ask the board to probably think about maybe putting a committee back together and revisiting this document and I'll, you know, I'll be a part of it if it needs to be done. But I think each point here needs to be evaluated differently.
Thank you.
Justin, you're next.
Ah, okay, buddy. Wasn't prepared for that.
You have to introduce yourself because I butchered your last name.
Oh, you butchered it, you got me good, didn't you?
I didn't want to do it.
I'm Justin Chruchel, C-H-R-U-S-C-I-E-L, 12503, Kentwood and Hampton Park. Kind of feel the way Jim does, I'm going to write off of his speech, that was great. Hampton Park has a development order. There's litoral shelves that are specified on the DO. I believe that's where the litoral shelf should stay, there's nowhere on the DO where it states they are put in to expect it to expand, it doesn't say that, nor on the DO. Nor if it did say that on the DO, it would show on each pond where it was expected to expand to. Each Hampton Park litoral pond does have a litoral shelf, that's marked. You guys know where I stand about the laterals and the, a fan of them, I know there's going to be laterals in the pond, I'm not saying remove them all, as I said before. Just keep them to where they're supposed to be and just kind of narrow them down a little bit. Took some photos yesterday, it was kind of funny, I was on my way home and the past week and a half, I noticed some weeds growing on the outer parts of the laterals. Took some photos, I mean, I know you guys can't see them, I'm sorry. This is something quick, I don't have a flash drive, unfortunately. But, these are ponds one and two on the entry, I sent them to you on email, you can go to... I just put through the one of me, I know you guys don't want to see my pretty face, but I'm standing next to a weed on lake number one. As I'm standing next to it, this weed's about this high, and it's a weed that's just... As I'm standing next to it, this weed's about this high, and it's a weed that's just outside the pond, literally right on the litoral edge. And these very same weeds are what you see going down the power line trail. And they lie in the, you guys said it was present tallest when I found it there, but there's four foot ones, there's three foot ones, there's all different sizes, and they lie in these lakes, one and two specifically. You know, that was what I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. I don't know whose responsibility is to take care of it, I really haven't gotten into it. I contacted our HOA to see if it's our ground maintenance group. I don't know if GSCVD's responsible, I don't know. But, back to the subject, I'd like to see that the pond standard remained the same as far as throughout Gateway, and that the GSCVD, being Hampton Park, gave the development order, that they, uh, is where I'm looking for it. Comply to the development order, you know, and that we keep the litorals to their litoral shelves and mark for the deal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Justin, one point that's gotten me concerned also, and this goes to staff.
Yes, sir.
That deal, I've seen it around Gateway, on the Gateway Green side, it appears to be some type of a fern.
Correct.
It's certainly not on the approved ten forty-eight list. The other thing I see in this picture is I see a alligator flag. That is not acceptable anyway. All of this thing points out one issue. We are not doing our job on litoral maintenance, even where we have litoral shelves.
Right, and it's like, you see the picture of the lake where it's on the bend? If you look at the bend, the very back of that lake, that's lake number one, or is it pond one, or do I have it marked pond two?
You've got this one, and you've got marked pond two.
Okay, that's pond two, so pond one. If you look at pond one, there's the back end, if you look close in this picture, you're going to see a lot of different weeds where there's trees. There's actually, on the very edge of the picture, there's a tree that's got a vine growing up, and it's kind of taking over this dead tree that sits there. I mean, these are just some of the stuff that's neglected within the ponds in Hampton Park, some of the concerns that I've had, and, you know, I mean, it just doesn't look good, it's, again, going back to aesthetics. You moved to Gateway because you think, man, it's Gateway. When I first moved from Chicago back in two thousand and four, Gateway was, man, the creme rola. You moved into Gateway, well, man, you live in Gateway, you must make a lot of money. Ah, man, you know, it's Gateway. You don't expect to pull into Hampton Park and see six foot weeds, four foot weeds, alligator flag, vines growing up, dead trees, overgrowth in litorals. You expect to see a nice manicured pond. I mean, just coming here today, I glanced over at Cypress Cave, granted, they have the rock. It's a little bit of rock, and it looks, I mean, it's clean, it's presentable. You can see it from the street, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is that presentable look. And it's all about aesthetics, this isn't, I fish, I don't fish the lakes, I mean, I mess around in the lakes, mess around, but I don't fish them, I'm more of a saltwater guy. So, you know, it's the look of the lake, the look, the presentation, you invite people over, you know, you want your area to look nice, so.
Justin, did you get a chance to see Jim's, what do you call it, like a proposed amendment to the current standards that has to do with the removal of non-shelf litorals? Did you get a chance to see that?
No, I have not.
I'd like to have you see it, because you're one that's been very interested in this, I would love to have your comments back regarding that procedure that was developed by Jim.
That's Jim.
Yeah, the eight-point procedure.
Now, this is Jim.
Jim was new to it, it was so...
Jim was new to it, okay.
Somebody passed out.
All right, I'm just making sure I'm not thinking of another Jim. Okay.
Looking at this picture, I'd just like to comment on it. The tall stuff is dog fennel, and it's, it's a seasonal weed. You know what it is? I've seen it before on lakes in Stony Brook. The low, the smaller stuff is not alligator flag, that's actually canna, because I know that plant well.
But it's hard to tell for sure, but right here, this picture, it looks like alligator.
There's a lot of stuff standing involved. From what, from what I heard from Jim and his discussion, I really liked what he had to say, as far as if, if you want them removed from your property, then you need, if you want to request it from the GSCVD, and the GSCVD get a price, I mean, I really enjoy what Jim said, I like that. I would not oppose to anything that he put.
I personally, if we're going to go that way, I'd rather have that
Yeah.
being under the supervision here, that we've got somebody, one, we know is licensed and permitted to do it.
Right.
And then, there could be a little bit more control on it.
Absolutely.
Having each property, we might go out there and get Billy Bob, but Billy Bob just got his license last week, God only knows what he's going to do.
You're right, exactly.
So, that would be some tweaking that I could see, but other than that,
Correct.
I'd like to have your comments back.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't look at this and you don't see what Jim's saying, then you just revert right back to the deal, and there's litoral shelves where they belong. It doesn't say nowhere on the deal where they're meant to expand, or they're meant to, I understand they are going to expand, but that's where the maintenance comes into play, okay? If you plant litorals, you keep them in certain sections, it's kind of like I said at the last few meetings, that lake by the pool is maintained. Where it's on the street, where it's visible from the public, it's nice and clean, it's clear, and I understand it's been different times and different years, but that's, that's kind of what I was saying, so, yeah. But, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have a question, and I, I have friends over in Hampton Park, so I go to there quite frequently, and I just noticed, literally like two weeks ago, I was in someone's backyard, and I noticed how much croqueau is on the shelf. And I was kind of looking at other lakes, and it's, it's not just, you know, one isolated area, so that's the theme in a lot of the areas of Hampton Park. But when I look at other neighborhoods, it's, I don't see that type of growth. Like in Stony Brook, we, homeowners, I mean, because we don't have this, we don't really, we don't have this problem. So who's cutting that, who's keeping that maintained, just?
I will say that we had a lot more litorals in the lakes prior to twenty-ten, when we had that, all that flooding in twenty-ten, wasn't as bad as Irma, but it really did kill off most of them.
I mean, because we've got litorals in Stony Brook, I'm just saying, like, the shelf, it's significant in Hampton Park where it's overrun. And I know when I used to live in Pinecrest, I mean, I maintained the lake right, yeah.
If you look at the areas along Pebble Brook, on the three different lakes, we've got a lot of litoral growth there.
Does it have anything to do with the different elevations and the high water rise and the elevations? Does that?
I think a lot depends on what the flower is there, which, they've identified in the deal at Hampton Park, I believe, eight different species. Four from the controlled elevation down, four from the controlled elevation up. And as we indicated before, the controlled elevation up has been dismissed. Now, he said they didn't have to do it, and so the four down, and they gave you four plants that they wanted to see. When Carol List came out two years ago, keep in mind that this whole thing was a rush because of a threat by Lennar. That you either accept this, or we're going to pass it over to the HOA, and we're going to screw them over. And our deal was, we want to get Carol in here to identify, and try to get this thing into a workable condition, that the CDD just wasn't accepting anything. We wanted it into a format that generally followed the development order.
Right.
And that's where it ended up, and that's why we ended up taking it over.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but our maintenance of it from the turnover period has been, you know, poor, extremely poor. We're just not doing what we need to be doing.
I mean, it sucks that, you know, before, I mean, it's obvious that, you know, that the turnover was a rush and that Lennar wanted out, you know, I mean, that's, you know, getting behind the scenes of it, but now it's unfortunate that, you know, now the GSCD has it, you know, and I hate to point fingers, but now it's kind of like put onto, you know, it's kind of like buying a home with a leaky roof. You don't know the roof's leaking until after you buy, and all of a sudden the rain comes, and you're like, oh, my roof's leaking, you know, I've got to take care of this, you know?
Well, and to be fair too, it's not like we've been maintaining these lakes for years. We recently, how long have we had them?
I don't think all of this happened even since midsummer.
Right, so, and there were contracts in place, pre-existing contracts, that Hampton Park weren't included in, in some of those, so, you know, I think we're aware of the situation, but again, we're sitting on, how many months have we had Hampton Park, these lakes in our control?
Year, year and two months, something like that. And I know, I walk my bank daily, I mean, I know you've heard, you know, the five properties that are removed on whatever.
Everybody knows Justin.
Everybody knows Justin, and I'm, I am like the Gateway superstar. I'm like the viral, you know, I'm going to tell you, I'll split the money with everybody then. I like that.
I need you to wrap up, because I think we've...
I'm sorry, yeah, no, no, no. What I was going to say is that, I don't notice any erosion on the bank, and I walk in here more than most of the amount, you know, it's, it has been a, it has been a pleasure to have this thing. Thank you.
Our last speaker on the list, listen, let's say, and then another part, a tale second to the last speaker, Rebecca Grayhouse-Tinkle, Ms. Tinkler-Bentine, Drive.
Chairman Feinberg, board members, fellow residents, I think the speaker is before me. I'll introduce myself, I am Rebecca Tinkle, and yes, I'm Mary Day. We live on Pond One Sixteen, and we have about two hundred and twenty feet of water boundary in the rear of our home. When we purchased our lot about eighteen years ago, I fell in love with the view, our lot, the beautiful water, and the golf course. It's a dream, every day I look, and I'm in heaven. As the de-order is silent for our pond, meaning no order for litorals whatsoever, it is beyond my comprehension why after eighteen years, it has to be changed. Presently, the CDD is not maintaining its existing litorals and ponds, allowing weeds to grow. Why would anyone allow more planting when the present system in place is not maintained? And the CDD has no money budgeted extra to pay for anything. Secondly, the pond standard has no professional input in this creation that I'm aware of. No professional engineer had any input whatsoever in this document, and that's not acceptable. In my opinion, you go to a doctor when you're ill, not someone who studied first aid. When you have a legal opinion or advice, you don't write Dear Abby. When you have a water issue, you use a professional engineer, not someone who thinks they are one. In summary, until, as a board, you can take care of what you have right now, which is a debacle with litoral and maintenance. And tell homeowners how you intend to pay for future expansion, and not even consider other ways of pond maintenance like aeration. I will be one hundred percent against litorals in Pond One Sixteen. I thank you very much for the privilege of speaking, I thank you all for your service.
Avery, you ever just say something?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Avery Deming is back for another time.
Coming back like a bad penny, you know. Hey, I appreciate the board hearing you public on this issue, and I understand everyone's concerns, I have seen it all, I've been studying this for six months only, not like two years, like some of you are three years or more. I'm sorry, I can't say I know as much as you do. But here's what I do know, a couple of quick things. A lot of things change after eighteen years. State's water quality changes, state, county requirements change. Why do they change? Well, because they're full of crap, or because maybe they know a little something that we don't know. Well, it's, I think, because of the fertilizers and all the things that they know that we don't know, and the water quality changes. So the biggest thing is meeting the state water quality. This is what I'm told by county officials, believe me. The biggest thing is meeting the state water quality standards, okay? That's what the county standards then are based upon. The county has the twenty-five percent minimum, or twenty-five percent land usually along the control, what's it called, perimeter, control level perimeter, but that's not stated as the minimum. That's the minimum that a developer has to put in. When I would think about that, you think they're going to tell the developer to put in more than the minimum? More than the minimum is certainly a value to the lakes. Why would they put in plants that are expandable? That grow fast? That are made to grow along the shelf area, two foot deep in water? Ever think of that? Well, they're made to grow because they're supposed to grow. There's nothing in the standard that say, keep that, that the twenty-five percent lake bank minimum, nothing, I've read it all. The weeds that Justin mentioned are weeds, I've talked to Elle about that, and Aquagenics is supposed to be taking them down, by the way. That's a maintenance problem, that is not directly a litoral, it's not a litoral problem at all, in fact. And there are a number of those kinds of weeds that are to be taken care of by Aquagenics. For instance, the firefly should be taken down, weeded out, and there's some other, there's a thousand different litoral species. We have four in Hampton Park that I know of, so. I don't know about your DO, but that's what our DO says. The rest are to be sprayed and maintained, they have been sprayed in Hampton Park, by the way. Again, every HOA is different. Every HOA was built differently. HOAs are different ages, different, even, I bet, different soils, so they drain differently. Litorals have five different benefits. The stones over there across the street in the club, yeah, they look fine for a while, but now they're turning brown and green, and the algae is sitting in the middle of the lake. That's the ugliest thing I've ever seen, talk about aesthetics, okay? Okay, a couple other things, home own value, home values. Every development I was in looking for a home charged more for lake view. All I can tell you. Gators floating around the lakes, yes, we have a few, there are two footers right now, the other day, there was, might have been a five footer a month ago. They're not everywhere, as quoted by a certain party. They're not everywhere, as quoted by a certain party. Homeowners, it was stated homeowners should be able to take care of their own. Well, first of all, it's not theirs, it's the, it's the community CDD's lake, it's not their lake. It may be their view, but guess who else has a view of their bank? The ten other homes across, the two homes on either side, there are other people impacted by a single homeowner taking action in his own, not even his own, but the CDD's lake at his fifty feet. It impacts more than ten homeowners across the lake. Just be aware of that too. In Hampton Park, for you who have not heard, we took a survey of, we surveyed seventy, seventeen percent of four hundred homes that were on the lakes, and of those seventeen percent, ninety percent want litorals to remain as is, with just proper maintenance. So one of the big issues here is what is proper maintenance? And that goes to the document here, proper maintenance. We are missing, lacking proper maintenance. We can credit our own little GSCDD government here for lacking the proper documents, the funding, whatever it takes, that's our government not doing their job. I hate to have to say that, but part of it is their responsibility. Now, let me see. Hampton Park itself is its own different story of why we didn't, why our plantings didn't match up to the deal. There's a host of things that occurred over the course of the ten years it took to build and turnover Hampton Park, and those things added up to a requirement for Lennar to add extra, not extra, but add in the proper amount of litorals that were not planted correctly. And because of previous litorals being planted at one time, the... they had to then add the missing littorals around other sections of the lake. And that was called, I call it a distribution style planting around the rest of the shelf area. Uh, and that's what our people like today, is that fact that they went all the way around. Now, according to county officials, and I've interviewed them numerous times, it's not the plantings in the twenty-five percent, uh, of the shoreline that matters. It's the total number of littorals going in per lake that matters. That the, whatever that contractor is required to put in based upon the twenty-five percent, uh, lake, uh, perimeter, you take that and create, you can calculate the number of littorals from that. Doesn't matter in terms of their, uh, concerns where they put them because it's, the lake filtration will be taken care of better if they're distributed. Uh, your lake bank erosion will be better if the littorals are distributed. Fifty percent or more of the DOs being submitted to county do not have a sectional planting like Hampton Park did. And they're approved without that. All they are approving is the total number of littorals per lake, per that perimeter distance at twenty-five percent.
I agree.
So, okay?